I did fix my hair. I've let it go, okay? Okay. Let's call this Committee of the Whole meeting to order July 19th. We only have a couple of motions to make as part of our Committee of the Whole meetings. First one is to, oh, I almost did it again. Yeah. I was, yeah, thank you. I've got 15 eyes on me tonight about proclaiming Pride Week, August 15th to the 21st, 2021. And I apologize for not doing so as part of my mayor's report in the last council meeting, but there it is. It's out in the public now and the official Pride Week is proclaimed, August 15th to the 21st, 2021. Okay. Adoption of the agenda. Counselor Reed, okay?
I'll move the adoption as presented, or the amendment as presented.
All right, thank you for that. All those in favor of the agenda. It's so nice to be free of the encumbrances of this plexiglass that we've been dealing with for the last 18 months. And, yeah, and maybe, thank you, Counselor Reed, for bringing that to my attention. But Counselor Reed sends, or Nagel sends his regrets. He's not feeling well today, so we're going to move on in his absence. And adoption of the previous minutes. Did someone have an opportunity to go through the minutes? I see Counselor Fedeko making a move.
I will move the adoption of the minutes.
Thank you for that. All those in favor of the minutes. Carrie's charging through the agenda. Delegations, there are none. Business, first order of business is residential recycling cart spot checks. Fabrizio, welcome this afternoon. Agenda, or the podium is all yours.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I'm here this evening to present to the results of the residential recycling cart spot checks and also discuss about the reason why we carry out this program and also to see what the next steps are going to look like based on the results of our program. So the blue card program was started in 2011 and Cochrane do love this program. But over time, program participation and sorting diligence tends to decline. And also we need to consider that we have so many new families here in Cochrane and the programs, especially the recycling programs are so different throughout Canada. And so sometimes people coming, coming here to Cochrane, they don't know exactly what the rules are, so they tend to use the previous rules they were using in the previous community they were using, they were living. So to maintain the market standards for recycled materials and keep costs low, it's essential the residents put the right material in the right bin. So everything right in the black, in the blue, and in the green. And so, as a matter of fact, the recycling world is not what it used to be a few years ago. So we need really to care, to pay attention on what we put in our, in our blue bin, otherwise you're going to pay much more money. And so what happened on the recycling world, so a few years ago, four years ago, since four years ago, the market drastically changed, mostly because of the Chinese national word. So what happened, China basically, after 20 years of getting all the recycling coming from municipality, from North America and Europe, noticed that most of the recyclables was not recyclable anymore, it was just garbage, they were paying big bucks for that material. So at a certain point, the government just said, okay, that's it. We are done with taking all your stuff that is not actually recyclables, and then now it's your problem. And so at that point, the markets crashed and the interior market wasn't ready to take all that recyclables material. So the simple market rule, very high offer, very low demand, the cost, the price is just going to crash. And that's what happened. So as a result of this contamination in loads of recycling, so everything that is not supposed to be in the blue bin can now cost up to three times what it would cost just sending it to the landfill. And this could potentially affect future service cost and residential rates. So that's why we decided to play in advance. We didn't want to react, but to be proactive. And so we retained Tetra Tech Canada to perform contamination spot checks on residential curbside, on curbside blue cars in the town. We didn't want to get the resident by surprise. This was a program that was supposed to educate residents. We didn't want to punish anybody. So that's why the program was anticipated through local paper, website, Facebook, utility bills, insert. Exactly. We didn't want to punish anybody, so it was nice to let them know why we were doing this, that we were doing this and why we were doing that. And the goal was to spot check pretty much all the blue cards currently in the town. This study was conducted in October, October, November 2020 for approximately five weeks. Again, the main goal for the spot check program was to educate residents on what is considered contamination in the recycling blue card and how to manage program costs. Again, there are so many, so many different residents coming from so many different communities here that sometimes they don't know exactly what the rules are. And that's the great possibility option for us to educate them door, door to door. So the spot check program would also give us indication and info on what our next educational communication campaign should be focused on. So when we know what the problem is with the blue bin and what the contamination in the blue bin, then we can do something about it. If you don't know, if you don't know that is, it's going to be a bit tougher. So we carried out our spot check program and safety and privacy for our residents was absolutely essential for us. The spot checkers only inspected cars when they put out for collection and they did not remove items and they did not record or share personal details. Basically, what they did, they just opened the lid, they checked what was on the surface, and they recorded what the items were, what the contamination was. The spot checkers followed all Alberta has guidelines and sanitized all the touch points of the car to reduce the potential risk of spreading of COVID-19. Of course, that was done during COVID-19, so we had to take that into consideration. So extra step we taken in order to keep everybody safe. And the goal was not to link the blue card items with residents, but to know the type of contamination issues that are most prevalent and educate residents on how they can improve their sorting habits. And this is what we realized, that it's not, the contamination in the blue bin is not because people want to throw the wrong stuff in the blue bin, it's because 90% of the time, they don't know what the system is supposed to be. So we need to educate them and tell them exactly what to do. And to do that, we work on an educational tag that was prepared with our communication office and with the contractor that was left on cars where contamination was found. And the beauty of this educational tag was it also was not only giving, telling residents what the mistake was, it was also telling them what the right step was to correct that mistake. As you can see here, for example, the first line, we have loose plastic bags. They're not supposed, the plastic bags are good, but they're not supposed to be loose in the blue bin. So, okay, that's the mistake. What's the right step to take? Bag everything, tie up the bag, and place it in the blue card. Done. And this was of all the different items, all different contamination types that we were thinking about finding in the, in the blue card, and we gave the wrong habits and the right one to adopt. And of course, if checkers interacted with residents, they were given a brief explanation and questions were answered. The check was also provided with a letter from town explaining the reason why the program was done and giving also contact information in the case that residents did have any other question for us. Checkers would leave the card and perform a visual spot check of the materials within the card. If the checkers identified contaminants within the card in accordance with the tagging and turning standards provided by the town, the checkers will leave the tag on the card's handle. If the majority of the card's content were acceptable based on the tagging and turning standards, the checker did not tag the card. The checkers, in agreement with us, they were not really strict. So if there was a lot of contamination, yeah, they were tagging it. If it was clear there was one or two items that were not supposed to be there, that was not a problem. They didn't often need a tag. Checkers was also indicate which contaminants were present by checking off the appropriate type of contamination on the tag. And when necessary, they would also include some comments of what the kind of contamination was. In the case, for example, garbage, there was a tag for garbage to check out, then garbage was garbage, right? So we understand, okay, the resident doesn't know what the specific garbage was in the card. Then the checkers would explain that with a comment like there was a piece of wood or rocks, so something that will let the resident know exactly what was there. If the contaminants exceeded the allowable amount of contamination, the card was turned 90 degrees and the appropriate option was checked off the top of the tag. Turning the card would notify the collection trucks not to collect the card. And in this case, this was the option that was flagged. Results, pretty much 12,000 households were spot checked with approximately 70% of households being spot checked twice. Were able to go back to a few households after the first visit in order to understand what the difference was between the first and the second visit, understand if that made the difference over the five weeks of the program. In total, the study spot checked 97% of the town residential curbside program, collection program. The overall participation rate saw the cars, the number of cars that were out for collection on the set date was approximately 79%. But the actual participation rate is, we know is much higher than this because we have seniors or household with one or two people living in it, they don't place out the blue card every week. So for sure, the participation rate is much higher than this one. 1.3% of the cars were properly, improperly placed out for collection, especially in cul-de-sacs. And this is when a blue card, the blue card took close each other, or the blue card took close to a car, or to a fence, or to a garage, or is the lid is open, or they are turned. Still, very low, very low percentage. And 24% of households were tagged, including households that were turned. Of these 24% of households tagged, 99% of the cars were tagged only, so they were collected after being tagged. And only 1% of the cars were both tagged and turned. These 25 cars in total out of the 12,000 cars that we checked. So really a slow, a very low percentage. Let's just see a little bit about the results. And so there are lots of different kinds of contamination, but the three categories that are loose plastic bags, bag recycling, and mixed material packaging, did represent 80% of the contamination. That is huge. So we know we have a problem with these three type of contamination. There are other items that are not supposed to be there, but do represent a smaller, a smaller percentage of contamination. A few examples. The first one is bag recyclables. We do require material to be loose in our blue card for how our sorting facility are structured. And, but I know that for in other municipalities, even in Alberta, all the northern part of Alberta, Edmonton and the community around Edmonton, they do bag the recycling. So I don't understand. It's been a whole new mistake from some residents. And of course, this kind of car was still collected. The problem is with bag material is that when it gets to the facility, the conveyor belt, they go so fast that when the staff just see a bagged, a bag of material, they just throw it as garbage. That's the problem. That's why we cannot afford to have bag recycling. Photo number two is loose plastic and mixed material packaging. Again, this is a whole new mistake, so it's great that we can communicate directly with these residents, telling them, can you please next time bag all this material? And of course, this kind of card was collected. Picture number three, yardways. So a resident decided to use instead of this green card or blue card for a huge bag of leave. And this is one example where, when the card wasn't collected. We didn't have many of this example, but clearly here, there was an abuse of the system and the card, this material would have created a lot of problems for the facility. So that card was turned, tagged and turned. And like the fourth one, just rocks, slice of pizza, clearly another abuse of the system. Doesn't clearly belong to the, to the blue card and was tagged and left behind. As I said, top three contaminants were loose plastic bags, bag recycling, and mixed material packaging. They do represent 80% of the contamination. When we did revisit households, we noticed that turning, tagging and turning cars, it did influence an improvement in recycling separation. So the cars that were first time they were turned and not collected, the second time they were much better. Recommendation coming out from the, from the report, from this study, is to continue to communicate with residents, giving heads up to residents, explaining why we're doing this well ahead of time, made this program really successful, this project really successful. We didn't have any pushback. We didn't have any complaint. And residents were going out when they saw the checkers checking their blue cards, but not for complaining, but asking questions. Hey, what should I do with this? What should I do with that? When they took the opportunity to ask for questions, and that was exactly what we were doing out there. Continue to turn cars where they are heavily contaminated. By doing that, it signals to residents that refusal of collection and possible enforcement action are potential consequences if contaminants were placed in the card. Future spot checking studies. Keep doing this spot checks every, every few years just to see how the situation is going, is improving, and also to see if the communication programs that we put in place are working or not. And of course, based focus educational and communication campaigns on this particular contaminant that we found in, during the study. There is no point in spending money and resources in a contaminant that represents 1% of our contamination, but let's work on the 80% of the contaminants that we found in our, in our blue card. And this is all for my presentation. I'm happy to get any questions.
Well, thank you for your report tonight. Interesting topic. I have to admit, I was tagged for the loose bags. So, and I'm, I had written down why. But you answered that in your presentation, so I appreciate that. Counselor Reed?
Yeah, I'm continuing to be excited about your, I mean, the ambience of your, of your presentation continues to excite me. And recycling is really important. And like the mayor, I was tagged. I'll admit it. And it was over the loose plastic bags in plain blue wrap. Now, my question was, or my thought was, you know, with any program where you're trying to change human behavior, you reach a saturation point. And I'm not sure that we're there yet, you know. I mean, there are some people that you're just never going to be able to change. And that's not to say that we shouldn't continue with education, but I'm just wondering if, if, I mean, what, what do we, how do we measure when that saturation point is? And if, if I think that this program costs $36,000, if you had $36,000, could you spend it in a different way in terms of, other than spot checking? Like your last recommendation, for example, if 80% of it is loose plastic bags like the mayor and I, maybe you'd just focus on that in some way and spend the $36,000 on, on that form of education and taking one of those contaminants at a time as opposed to kind of an all encompassing one. I wonder what your thoughts are on that?
Yeah, that's, that's true there, to Counselor Reed. That's a great question. There is not an easy answer to this one. There are so many different personalities throughout the community. And you will never have only one tool that would allow you to reach them all. You have to use a number of tools in order to reach as many as possible, right? So this is one tool. And so we need also to be creative and anytime to try something different in order to reach that segment of the population that we were not able to reach with a previous tool. So try as many as possible. So this is one. Probably I won't recommend to use this one again for another few years. Now we know a little bit of the picture, what it is. And you just said, yes, now we can spend a bit of money in adjusting, in correcting these behaviors, using a number of tools. Exactly. Just only a Facebook campaign won't be enough. We will reach a number of residents, but not everybody. So we'll have to go with some being present at events or utility information, different tools. So, in order to reach everybody. You will never reach everybody. You're right. But if you, if you are able to reach the majority of the residents, we consider ourselves happy.
I totally agree. And I would just add two more comments quickly. One is, I don't know if the mayor's behavior has changed, but mine has in our household. We are, we are plastic bagging those things and dealing with it. The other is that while it hasn't directly affected my household, but I've heard from others that your education program in the schools has been really effective, that children have gone home and told their parents about what they were doing wrong in terms of recycling. And I, and I would hope that we would be able to continue that because that, I think, really makes a difference. But again, thank you for your work and I really appreciate this report.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Reed. Counselor Fedeko?
Thanks for your information. I was not tagged, thankfully. So I don't know about you guys. I just wanted to say thanks, thanks for all that you do on this, on this topic. A couple of things. One thing I didn't hear about this time, and I'm not sure about what the difference was between the last time that you did the checks, there were no rants particularly out there. I didn't hear, it hit the social media land as to what we were doing, why we were doing it. Was there something different that you did with this campaign versus before when you checked carts where we were kind of blasted everywhere?
Thanks for the question, Counselor Fedeko. Yeah, this was not as painful as the previous one. You're right. The previous one has, had a different goal. It was not on the blue card, it was on the black card. And we wanted to understand how much recycling and organics was still in the, in the black card. In order, that was done when we were discussing about moving to every second week garbage collection. So on the study that we did, in order to understand if that was possible or not. Honestly, I don't know why that was different. For sure, we learned from that one. So we gave, this time we gave a heads up to everybody and we explained exactly what we did and what we were going to do and why we did it. The first time, we didn't do that probably as good as we, as we did this time. So definitely we are learning from, from previous experiences. And the, the black card spot check was a bit more invasive. So we were also opening the bags in order to, to check what was in the bags because as the recycling material is loose, so we can easily see what's on the surface. On the black card, everything's bagged. So in order to realize and to quantify the material in the card, we had to open the bags. That's probably one of the reasons why there was a little bit more pushback on that one compared to this one.
Well, I encourage you to keep doing it because honestly, I learned a lot when I had my own garbage, you know, analyzed, right? I learned a lot about what couldn't go in, what was compostable, what wasn't. I think that, kind of like Counselor Reed, I mean, that education piece is so, so important. And I try to share your app where I can go because not only does it remind me when to put out my carts, but it's, it's a great reference for residents to be able to check as to where it does, you know, people have questions all the time if they have old carpet they're trying to get rid of, or whether or not it's a granola bar wrapper. They don't necessarily know where it goes. So I think continuing that education is great. And I know in social media land, when it comes back to memories, there was one that came up, or it was like showing people about, you know, how to recycle the coffee cup that you buy out in public, and that was great. I think constantly encouraging people and getting that message out is the only way that we're going to change, honestly, behavior out there. So keep on doing what you're doing. Your team is, your team's doing a great job.
Thank you. Counselor McFadden?
Well, I also wanted to claim that I didn't get tagged. But I'll let it sit for a second because I live in a, in a town home complex, a condo complex, so I can't get tagged individually, which is great for me. But, no, I think a really good job was done on, on the program because, you know, the first time, the first version of it, we certainly heard about it. And you managed to get through the entire town with very minimal disturbance, which I think is excellent. I think the education approach is very important. And also, as Counselor Reed had highlighted, the education in the schools. That's always where these changes, you know, come from. I remember being a kid a long time ago and talking to you about electricity. But my question then is around this, well, I guess I have two questions. The first is, I mean, with this, we're very much going with an education piece to get compliance. There will come a point though where we're going to need that compliance to happen. Is there, is there a stick strategy to the carrot and stick approach? And then, secondly, what is the strategy around the multi-unit residential recycling strategy?
Yeah, thanks for the question, Counselor McFadden. So definitely communication, education is the, is the first step that we need to, to work on. And we know that with that, one, especially using a number of communication tools, we can reach the majority of the population. Then again, as, as the report also recommends, when the behavior doesn't change and when there is an abuse of the system, then the only, the only way to reach certain, some residents is the enforcement. So, and I'm not talking about fines, but just turning the card and not collecting it, it does, it does change, change behavior most of the time. So that's what we try to do, working with communication, communication. And then when it doesn't, it doesn't, it's not enough, then we have to work on enforcement. Multifamily, yeah. Multifamily is, we did, now we also multifamily in Cochrane, they do have both recycling and organics program in place. The recycling, the organics was mandated three years ago, I believe. So now it's about time, this is going to be a year for us to evaluate all the different systems in town that were implemented over the years and see how we can, we can improve those, those programs. Of course, in the case of the multifamilies, we can give recommendations. We cannot really work on fines or, we can, we can provide some educational tools, but it's not that we can just go there and talk directly to residents because it's a condo. It's not our mandate to work on those, with those residents. It's not, we don't have the power to refuse service because it's a private company providing services, provides service there. So what we can do is only work on education. And that's what we do and what we're going to do again in the future.
So I have two follow-up questions then. So with the multifamily, so contamination in a multifamily solution doesn't affect the town's contamination numbers, right? It's a separate pickup, a separate system, so it doesn't affect the taxpayers if the contamination, we don't get a handle on it. It's a separate, that's correct?
That's correct. Yes. We won't be penalized for that, yeah.
And I still get the comments from people that have really engaged heavily with this, they're sorting, they're, they're composting, and they're like, you know what, I barely use, you know, once a month I put my stuff out, you know, why do I have to continue to pay? I, just to share that answer tonight would be great.
You mean for the garbage stream?
Yeah. So like, what is the response to that, to that residence that has taken up the garbage and the recycling and composting? They're doing everything. They're barely, you know, putting out the garbage, but they're still paying at the same level as the neighbor across the street.
That's correct.
How do, so how do we respond? What's the answer to that resident that's doing everything that would like to see a reduction in pickups because they honestly don't need it?
Yeah. First of all, they can talk to their neighbors and try to convince them in using the, the black cards less than what they're doing. And this is a fair question, right? So unfortunately, we don't have a pay-as-you-do system. And we have been discussing now for a couple of years about how we can implement a pay-as-you-do program, like you are, you are charged only on the number of times you pick up, you pick up the card or something like that. We will discuss in the past years about moving to every second week garbage collection. It's a very divisive topic. Lots of people who like, who love to that, to go that direction. But 50% of our residents do think that they would be allowed to use their black card as much as they want. And so we don't have everybody thinking the same way or going that direction, otherwise it would be, it would be much easier. So we are working to make the system fair. Not sure when that is going to be possible to implement those kinds of programs because there are lots of barriers and implementing cost barriers and also implementing the program can be really challenging from a different, from a different point of view. But definitely something we do know and we do keep in the consideration when we plan for the future.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Not to get down that rabbit hole too far, but I would suggest that part, the pickup is only one part of the fee. And the truck is going by everybody's neighborhood or everybody's door and not, just because your garbage isn't out doesn't mean that you're not paying for the service. So I think that the answer is that there's, that's one small piece of the puzzle. There's so much going on behind the scenes that, you know, fees and tipping and contracts, et cetera. I think it's, as Fabrizio is suggesting, it's a very complex issue that I think we have some work to do on. So, yeah, good question. Counselor Wilson?
Thank you. I had a question about just the impetus of it. Is it principally a cost savings initiative that we're going after? You'd mentioned, Fabrizio, that it's three times more expensive for items, contaminant items in the blue bin than they would be in the black bin. Is, is this principally to stop us from having to increase the costs on residents for curbside pickup?
Yeah, that's, that's the, that's the goal. Contamination does cost a lot in the, in the blue card because at the facility, basically you're at the sorting facility, you're, you're paid for the processing of that contamination, for the transportation to a landfill, plus the landfill, landfill fees. So you're paying three times what you would, you can just pay for once if it goes in the, in the garbage, in the garbage bin. pay for once if it goes in the, in the garbage, in the garbage bin. So potentially, we could, we could, we could pay more if we don't, if you're not proactive. I also want to add that the province is actually now talking about implementing an EPR program in Alberta, so Extended Producer Responsibility Program. They have been engaging all the municipalities in Alberta for the last three months. So now they are working on a framework to implement this program in Alberta. So that means that the producer will take care of the, of the recyclables material, the processing, the transportation and processing of these materials. So we can have some, some money back from the producers that we are currently paying. But that is going to depend a lot on the level of contamination that we have in our blue bin. Program, this EPR program is gonna, is gonna be in place probably in a couple of years. We still have a long way to go. Probably the framework is going to be approved within 2021 or beginning of 2022. By the time the system is implemented, probably we're going to get to 2023. But we need to get ready by that time and at the lowest contamination possible in order to get the best, the best dollar possible. So yes, mostly, it's mostly an economic reason why we're doing this, yeah.
So I was curious, when you, when you had the one slide, Fabrizio, about there's a, the collapsing recyclables, recyclables market and that formerly recyclable items are either no longer acceptable or harder to get rid of. Is that pushing, I haven't, I guess I haven't followed like a lot of residents, is there certain items that used to be recyclable that now are going into our block bins or?
Everything is still recyclable, just as a matter of course. Before, all the recycling world was eager to that material. So they were willing to pay good money for that. Now, some material is still recyclable, but we have to pay to get that material recycled. So still, everything is recyclable, just as a matter of the market. Do they want it or do they don't want it? Are they willing to pay for that material? Or how much they're going to pay for it? So four years ago, cardboard was top of the roof. They were paying great money for that material. Even for plastic, they were paying, they were paying good money. Now, it's not, cardboard is recovering, plastic is still, we're still paying to recycle that material. So yeah, it's a matter of market.
Thank you. Thank you for the clarity. Final question was just about when you were talking about bins flipped sideways. That was, I hadn't seen that done yet. Does that mean that all the contents are still in the bin and it's flipped sideways onto the street and the resident has to come and sort all the things out of their bin? I just, I didn't understand.
Yeah. So we, in that case, when the contamination, for example, when there was the bag of leaves in the, in the cart, we just leave a tag explaining that the cart wasn't collected for that reason. And we turn it so the driver, the truck doesn't collect it. And then it's up to the resident to get through it properly of that leaves. So using their green card or taking it to the eco center. There are other options to get rid of that, of that material, just not sending it to a recycling facility.
I see. It's, the bin is rotated but not, I was picturing it flipped sideways on the street.
No, no, no.
Okay, gotcha. Okay.
Dump everything down.
No, we don't dump it.
And the other, the other part there, is it tagged first and then turned? Or is it the first time that it's found in non-compliance, it's turned and not collected?
During this study, even if there was a little bit of contamination, we did tag it but emptied. We refused service when the contamination was just too much, like the car full of leaves or the car full of rocks. In that case, clearly, there was an abuse of the system. So the cart, there wasn't given a warning. It was just left a tag and put a tag on and left the cart behind.
Okay, great. Thank you. I think myself and many residents would appreciate that we're trying to not have the bill for collection increased by taking steps now. And I appreciate the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel Padeko, back to you.
One quick question. I know a couple of years ago, we talked about the contract costs of having, whether or not it was our black bins picked up. Can residents anticipate any sort of additional costs? And how long are those contracts in place for? Is there going to be some sort of recurring thing coming up that people should be aware of or anticipate?
Currently, there is nothing. That would make us think that the cost is going, is going up currently if you're able to contain contamination and doing a proper job in sorting our material. But again, the market can collapse again in six months or in a year. So we cannot anticipate that. Based on what we know at the moment, we're not expecting a huge increase on the bills. Of course, the contracts, the contractual costs, they go up every year. So every few years, we have to increase the cost for the program. But otherwise, huge increase are not expected at this point. Yeah. And actually, in the future, we might expect maybe some money coming back if everything goes, goes well with the EPR program.
Excellent. Excellent news. Thanks.
Thank you, Counsel Padeko. I'm, I'm just sitting here puzzled about how you guys were in the 2% that didn't get looked at this, this year. So anyways, yeah. Again, most colleagues have spoken about this today, but I think the, obviously, education is key in this and ongoing. And I like your, your approach that over the years, we don't just continually pummel this year after year. I think as Counsel Reed has suggested, there's likely a saturation point. But I, I do agree that most people want to follow the guidelines. They just don't know what they are specifically. So perhaps maybe the next time we do this, and I think to Counsel Padeko's question about maybe why was this one more, you know, accepted, I guess, trying to find a positive way to spin that, than the last time there were tags? And I think part of that was your approach and everything that you've suggested so far. But from my point of view, I think it was also the tags. And Counsel Reed, you have one. It's, it's less of a ticket-looking tag and more of an explanation. And I guess that's where I'm going with my point. Thanks for the visual aid. That, I think people, back to my first question about, okay, I was ticketed for, tagged for loose bags, but why? I think if people knew the reason and kind of reflecting on what Counsel Wilson's saying about, hey, this is going to cost us more if we don't do this properly. And getting that message out there. And then this is why this is not acceptable. And maybe, and I think that's really the impetus of what, what you presented tonight. Yeah?
Yeah, that's correct. So providing a heads up to residents, explaining why a program is done, and it's done to save, to save the money, of course, it made, it made a huge difference. And also, involve with them in the, in the project, letting them know that we are coming. So they won't get, they won't be surprised by our checkers have been there. It made, it made everything easier. So yeah, definitely, we, we're learning all the time. So it's good that, that we are learning from our previous experiences. And this is working. So definitely, we are going to go this way again in the future.
Yeah. Okay. I don't see any other questions for you this afternoon. Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
I'll give that back to you, Counsel Reed. It says right on there. I get it. My behavior still needs to be adjusted somewhat in many areas.
Here is a saturation.
Okay, moving along. Thank you. 5B, Mr. Stewart's here this afternoon to present us the Fifth Avenue Site Development Strategy.
Good afternoon, Mayor and members of council. I am here to, along with the project team, to present the draft report for the Fifth Site Development Strategy. I'm going to pass this off to Chris, rather, or Mr. Nelson, rather quickly here. But just a quick background, in 2018, council received information, the tri-sites concept plan, and through the 2021 budget process, and this project was identified to advance what the servicing strategy would look like. How do we phase servicing or phase the development for the site to give council better information on how this site can come to fruition and understand the challenges, or not challenges, but the next steps past cost estimate. So with that, if I can invite Mr. Nelson up to the podium, and then afterwards, I will be back to help answer questions.
Okay, thank you. Good afternoon, Mr. Nelson.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of council. Thank you, Mr. Stewart, for the introduction. So I guess we'll start off with why a development strategy. And Mr. Stewart touched on these a little bit. But really, it was to build off of the tricep, concept work that was done, you know, to try and move forward to seeing that vision completed on this site. And it's a big site, as we'll, we'll get into in a few slides, and in a number of steps, it obviously need to occur to have that, that move forward. It was also to understand and explore the site development dependencies and identify some of the service improvements required and potential phasing approach. As you'll see through the slide deck tonight, there's obviously some onsite infrastructure we're thinking about, but also consideration of the area around the site and some of the offsite improvements that might need to be, be thought about and how that impacts this site potentially. And then lastly, making sure that it was comprehensive and things were integrated. And again, that speaks to the second point. But as you go through redevelopment, which will take a number of years, just making sure that we're thinking about that comprehensively. So Mr. Stewart mentioned in 2018 to 2019, the tri-site concept plan was developed. There is extensive engagement that occurred to, to move this forward. And as you can see on the right side, the vision for the Fifth Avenue site includes a number of different uses, from seniors housing, mixed market housing, event center on the, on the upper and lower bench there from a structures perspective, to a variety of different open space improvements, as well as the rodeo grounds and flex space in the middle there. So at the end, the intent here is really to create a very special site, a central park for downtown Cochrane, in addition to all those other community uses that were identified through this process. So we get into the site servicing analysis, which is really the, the heart of the report. There's a number of different pieces that we want to work through from an existing conditions perspective, but also preferred, preferred scenario. And obviously, we saw the vision through the, the concept rendering there. But today, the site is heavily used. On the upper bench, there's a number of structures where community organizations are utilizing the site. And on the, the lower bench, the rodeo grounds, the baseball diamonds are also heavily used, obviously, throughout different times of the year. The site also has existing infrastructure onsite that we need to be thinking about and how that will be phased and redeveloped over time, as well as on the next slide here. It's a unique site. It's six hectares in size. It's got the upper bench and the lower bench. It's broken with a pretty significant slope in between. So this is, you know, an interesting site from a redevelopment perspective in a sense of two different development cells and how you think about how that could be phased over time, but also because of infrastructure going through the site. And the slope, you know, poses some different challenges to be thinking about as you redevelop. So for each of the different pieces of infrastructure, we'll just walk through what the existing state is and then talk about what the preferred or recommended approach to servicing is for those, those pieces of infrastructure. So as you can see here on this figure, right now, the site is serviced by two different water mains. There's a water main along Fifth Avenue on the eastern side here that services the, the upper bench. And then on the west side, on Glen Patrick Drive, there's also a water main that service, could service the lower bench. The existing condition within this area is the, the water network doesn't have a ton of redundancy and, you know, could be improved, you know, as you do improvements within this area, could improve that situation. And the site, if it was to redevelop, wouldn't have sufficient fire flow. So that's another thing to be thinking about, so the improvements that are suggested. The objectives are to increase the available fire flow onsite and then also provide redundancy within the overall system. So that would benefit not only the site, but the neighboring areas from a water redundancy overall network perspective. So you're seeing there on the slide, the attachment of a water main along Fifth Avenue going north to Glenbow Drive, connecting to another water main there, which creates redundancy in the overall network, and then servicing into the site, the east-west main going across the site to, to provide that additional fire flow as the site redevelops. From a sanitary perspective, there is a couple mains that cut through the site. And you can see with the arrows there how that, that sanitary flows. So on the bottom portion of this figure, you'll see sanitary main that services some of these sites along Fifth Avenue and then connects into the main along Glen Patrick Drive here. And then there's the other sanitary trunk that goes across, diagonally across the site here. And this provides service for historical downtown in Cochrane here. And then there's another connection point here that connects to that main. So from an overall perspective, within this, this main is aged, our trunk story is quite aged. And then there's some performance risk from a capacity perspective. So the suggested approach for this is for, because of that elevated performance risk, to replace that diagonal main that goes across the site and deal with those capacity constraints, as well as the asset renewal perspective while you're doing this work. The main, or the trunk story on the, the bottom portion of the site, that would remain in place and untouched through redevelopment. On-site stormwater, you have existing main cutting across the site from east to west, which again, connects to some of the services on, provides level of service to some of the sites on Fifth Avenue. And then you have a main running on the west side of the site, which provides services to the condos up north, north of the site. The approach that's recommended here, and this would be consistent with other redevelopment within town for, as it occurs, that you would deal with onsite stormwater on a parcel-by-parcel basis. So as, for example, the seniors building on the north side started to redevelop, there would be requirements there for them to handle their own stormwater and then tie into the system under, under certain parameters. And similarly, to the other structures that would be planned for the site on the upper bench. And the intent here is really to maintain consistency with other redevelopment and then provide greater flexibility for redevelopment. If everyone, as they're moving forward, can deal with that, then it provides flexibility for the site to develop and phase out appropriately. So as I mentioned, it wasn't only about the onsite pieces, but from a stormwater perspective, also looking offsite. There's some parallel work undergoing right now, the town's undertaking in regards to stormwater, offsite storm, sorry, stormwater in general for the downtown Cochrane. And through that work, there is four different challenges that were identified that are in close proximity to the Fifth Avenue site. Number one there on the figure was existing flooding of the Glenbow neighborhood during major rainfall events. So I imagine council is aware of some of those occurrences over the last number of years. Number two, connecting the newly installed railway street storm main. So through the railway street work that occurred last year, there was a new storm main that was put in place to increase the level of service for the railway street. And as that site, sites along that corridor redevelop, it now needs to connect and discharge into Big Hill Creek. So this would be, be something else, obviously, to be considered through this work. Inconsistent and insufficient levels of service in historical downtown. So again, that would be more broadly within the historical downtown stormwater catchment, thinking about how that, how the level of service is provided from a storm perspective. And then the fourth one was some ponding within the Canadian Pacific Railway right-of-way, which again, is pertaining to when there's major events, discharging into that, that ditch from the historical downtown is another consideration. So we wanted to make sure when, when these were being identified and thought about, and obviously, not just identified through this work, but over time, that, you know, as a Fifth Avenue site, part of that solution, overcoming some of these challenges, and what would that look like? So there's a, you know, obviously, some different options being looked at. And through the work, one of the options was, you know, a stormwater facility on the Fifth Avenue site. So that would obviously have major implications for the developability of that site. So obviously, we had to play that through and figure out what the best approach would be. So the, the figure on the left there shows a number of different things. So I'm able to step through those one by one. But again, the objectives here were to upgrade the level of service on railway streets. So find a connection point for that pipe that was put in last year. And the intent is to connect that, as you can see here, through the Fifth Avenue site to the existing main that runs through the site. So that would be as you start to do some work here to make sure that that's, that's connected and that can be fully utilized into the future. The second piece was to reduce the flooding within the Glenbow area as you have major storm events. So there's two different scenarios that could play out here. One would be, you know, upsizing an existing pipe to get to Big Hill Creek. And the other one would be taking along Fifth Avenue and then again, through, through the site. So that's still a decision point to be made. But with two, both of those pieces, there doesn't have to be any infrastructure improvements on the Fifth Avenue site. You can use what's already in place. So that was a key point. The, the last piece with the Highway 1A, or sorry, the historical downtown and the level of service being inconsistent is really about, those are some other major shifts that are going on there with the catchment. A lot of that has to do with the Highway 1A works and then also the Center of Works. So trying to reduce that, that total catchment so that it improves the level of service overall for that area. So those, again, don't impact the Fifth Avenue site. If there's further mitigation that needs to take place, for example, the ponding that happens within the CP ditches, there's other solutions that could be, could be utilized that wouldn't impact the Fifth Avenue site. So through this work, the, the decision was made from a recommendation perspective that we don't impact the Fifth Avenue site or the developability of that site because there's other solutions that could be put in place and that you can continue on with the, the vision. Obviously, it's been articulated through the tri-site plan. The last one from a servicing perspective would be access and pedestrian environment. So there's, obviously, counsel, as you go on the site, you'll, I think, appreciate there's a lack of, a little bit of pedestrian environment on, especially on the west side here. There's no sidewalk or pathway along this portion of the corridor. It's, you know, a gravel road here within, and then just, just grass on the side here. So that would be one thing from, from a current state perspective to identify. The other would be just identified through the tri-site work was just a lack of connectivity across to the site from, across Fifth Avenue. Right now, there's one marked sidewalk along Fifth Avenue to the site. So those are a number of pieces. And as we move forward to the next slide here, showing what those improvements could look like that were identified. So, you know, improving that western edge and how it interfaces with the Glenbow neighborhood was, was pretty critical. And it's making sure you connect the sidewalks along that west edge so people have, have the ability to edge so people have the ability to traverse along the site. And again, this is just illustration purposes, how this actually meanders and connects in the site is part of the more detailed work to be done in the future. The other piece was connecting people to the site, so making sure we have appropriate amount of crossings, both vehicular but also pedestrian. So that's what you're seeing here with these triangles, the red triangles are the vehicular accesses that are proposed, and then also the orange arrows, which would be the pedestrian connections. Again, just trying to make that a little bit more permeable and connections to the Fifth Avenue site a bit stronger as you go through redevelopment. And then one of the key pieces, we chatted about this a little bit with the corridor plan, was that with Fifth Avenue, really understanding that access management and how that crossing, those crossings could look and how that corridor would function in a more detailed state. And that would be a suggested next step when we get to there through this. So, you know, connecting the corridor plan and the redevelopment of the site would be a critical piece. So phasing, and with the phasing, we have some cost estimates as well to share with each of these different pieces. So there's a number of things, obviously, to consider with the phasing. There's a couple of key drivers. One would be the town, but also the site partners. There's a lot of different uses that are planned for the site, and site partners would be key drivers behind a number of those, obviously, getting off the ground and getting moving. And then also, you know, obviously, even if it's a town's lands, and there's a number of open space components, just how those thread together will be really important. So site readiness, you know, servicing, what we just chatted about, will be important, but there's other components to be thinking about, like user readiness. So, you know, do the site partners have the funding in place? What are the approvals that are required to move ahead and achieve the developments that they're envisioning? Access and connectivity, obviously, as you start to phase out, how does that impact access or connectivity of the site and making sure that those that aren't maybe redeveloping on site are still able to actively connect and access their parcels? You know, usability of the remainder of the development cells. So again, this is going to be, it's a large site and likely to move in different pieces, so making sure that the usability of the site is considered as you phase it out. And then collectively, considering, you know, the connection between all the different cells, we've, as you see, you're broken it up into, the light blue is showing kind of those site partners and the different cells that they would likely be moving, the senior center, mixed housing, event center, those pieces there. And then the light green, more of those town facilities, the open space, the pathway connections, the passive and recreation uses throughout the site. And thinking about how those all connect, obviously, drove how we thought about the phasing and how those pieces are all connected. So for Phase 1, and we've laid this out for the three phases that we'll show today, from, you know, overview of what the phase looks like, what the trigger is, and then what the infrastructure needs are to make that happen. So for Phase 1, it would include the senior center, a portion of the open space improvements, pathway connection to the upper bench, and really the rationale there is that with the senior center and a plan for 100 units, you know, the latest, obviously, that aware of, bringing a lot of more people to the site, just making sure that that connectivity is strong, getting folks to Fifth Avenue and to all the amenities along Fifth Avenue would be a critical piece. The advancement of this would be, you know, I guess, the readiness of that site partner and the ability to advance. A few things would have to happen, obviously, to allow that to occur. The north, baseball diamonds, so currently up in this area here, would need to be relocated to Horse Creek Park, so making sure that that's ready and that that wouldn't be disrupted from a level of service perspective for those users. The water, sanitary, storm infrastructure improvements would be suggested to all move with this phase. You know, the water would be required, and then the water and sanitary being in the same alignment would obviously create some construction efficiencies and then also not disturb the site in the future. And then the storm infrastructure being advanced at the same time, again, just for some of those construction efficiencies, that's an offsite consideration, but one that might make sense to move together, so that's why it's suggested here. There'd need to be some site grading, obviously, for Phase 1 to get that to, you know, as a development cell, the right grades that you need from a drainage perspective. And then improvement of the pedestrian connection, so likely along this western edge, would make good sense as you start to advance that piece, that phase. From a costing perspective, a couple things here just to point out, and then I'll go through each line, but we've structured this table a little bit differently than the other ones you'll see because there's a little bit of uniqueness to this. The infrastructure that's required to advance the site also provides benefit to, you know, from an asset renewal perspective for offsite improvements or level of service improvements. So it's important to point that out and differentiate. If this site didn't move forward, some of these improvements would be needed anyways. So we need to make sure that that council is alive to that. So from a water servicing costs, as I mentioned, there's some improvements, the overall redundancy of the network and the looping of that, namely this portion here. So that cost has been pulled out, that 1.2 million. The remaining portion would reflect the cost to service the actual site and provide that fire protection that's needed for the redevelopment. Sanitary servicing, as you can see, all of that is shown as improving the existing situation. So there's no cost attributed to the site, so the 400 and 400 is reflected that way, and that's because you're needing to replace the alignment here, the orange dotted line, from an asset renewal perspective. And that's reflected in the cost, obviously, that would have to occur in the future, no matter what. There'd be some earthwork costs, obviously, the grading of Phase 1, that would be attributed to the redevelopment, and then some open space improvements as well. And this really is a foundational pieces. We tried to break out in the report that the open space is quite flexible, and what we've put here in the Phase 1 is really a foundational piece. So this is putting in the pathways, it's putting in some vegetation, it's putting in some seating, just trying to make the space usable, enjoyable, have a nice interface with that future seniors building and then usable for the broader community. But recognizing that a number of the amenities within that open space are very costly, you know, playgrounds, splash pads, all those kind of things, so we pulled that out into Phase 1A, which you'll see on the next slide here. But there is still more flexibility within those open space improvements beyond that foundational piece, and again, that would be a discussion point. So Phase 1A, the boundary doesn't change at all, it's Phase 1, but all it is is increasing the public amenities within that that were envisioned through the Tri-Site work. So again, this includes plaza space, it includes the playground space, includes a multi-court space as well. And really, the trigger here would be just the financial ability to advance those uses on site, and again, trying to stagger this so that perhaps some can move forward and others delayed as town sees fit. There's no additional infrastructure needed. All of that setting of the stage would occur through Phase 1 and would be ready for these pieces when available. So Phase 1A costs just under, well, 5.7 million, plus or minus, and again, that's enhancing the amenities on the site. Phase 2, which is the southern portion here on the lower bench, this would include open space amenities as well as the rodeo grounds, and the trigger here would be, you know, obviously, the town and Alliance Club desire to advance that portion of the site. This would require the relocation of the south baseball diamond to Horse Creek Park, require the rough grading of the overall phase, and then the final grading of the open space amenity, again, assuming that site partner, the Alliance Club, would be advancing the portion of the site. And then also some improvements to the pedestrian connection, namely along the west edge here, and then a parking lot to accommodate the full site for users in the future. So Phase 2 cost estimates overall would be just around $7.8 million. And again, this is a large site with a number of different elements and amenities on it, and that's reflected, obviously, in this cost estimate. And then Phase 3, so this is on the upper bench. I should have said this earlier, I mean, the phases are set up just to try and delineate different components of the site. You know, obviously, the speed and how they move will depend on different site partners and their availability and ability to move. So Phase 3 doesn't mean it has to happen, the third phase, so I just wanted to point that out. But the, for Phase 3, these are the two development cells remaining on the upper bench, so this would be senior housing, or sorry, mixed housing on the northern portion here, and then the event youth center on the southern portion. There is some infrastructure need, obviously, to connect these future buildings to water sanitary. So you could look at maybe advancing some of that infrastructure earlier, but there's risks to that, just not knowing exactly where the buildings are going to be located and probably not beneficial to do until their plans are advanced and you truly know what that's going to be. There obviously would need to be some improvements along Fifth Avenue, and that would need to be thought through through the functional work, again, of how that will look and feel along that corridor, and that was, again, related to the corridor plan that council considered a week ago. And then Phase 3, so all the costs are related to Phase 3, you know, in regards to the site, onsite improvements and redevelopment of that are assumed to be borne by those site partners as they advance those cells. And then, like I said, the functional study of Fifth Avenue would help identify what those improvement costs would be and how those could potentially be shared with those parcels interfacing with the corridor. So this is the last slide here, and then I'll pass it back over to Mr. Stewart, but there's a number of next steps here. From an infrastructure perspective, there's some decisions that need to be made on which one of those stormwater options, offsite, want to be utilized, you know, do you want to move forward with the water, sanitary and storm wall at once to capitalize on some of those project construction efficiencies? So there's some infrastructure decisions to still be made to move this forward. From the governance and ownership perspective, obviously, you know, how this will be, how this will move forward, is the land to be subdivided, you know, is the land to be sold to different site partners or to own, be leased by the town? So a number of different pieces on the governance ownership side need to be thought through, and that'll help, obviously, dictate exactly where those boundaries are and how site partners can advance under that perspective. And then the last piece is around development plans and expectations. So this is really, you know, taking this next step and working with those site partners and discussing with them what the improvements look like, you know, testing what those development expectations were that were articulated in the Tri-Site work, and then make sure, again, that still aligns with what their plans are to move this forward. And a lot of that, again, would be driven by the governance and ownership side as those discussions evolve. So with that, I'll pass it back to Mr. Stewart, but happy to answer any questions that council may have.
Okay.
Hi.
Over to us.
Thank you.
Just like virtual pause there. Counselor Flowers.
Thank you for the complicated report. There's a lot of pages to it. Just to start off, there's some confusion about the wording, like for seniors, there's a senior center and there's seniors housing. So just so people understand, Phase 1 is the seniors housing that is recorded as the senior center there, so I don't want the public thinking that we're doing the senior center first.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, we'll make that edit.
It's to be located with the Boys and Girls Club or the Youth Center on the other Phase 2, I guess it was. So the governance, anytime we talked about it with the Tri-Site committee, we always assumed that the town would keep ownership over the land. We never did talk about subdividing or giving any of the land away without the central core of downtown, that the town would want to keep it, but I guess that's still up for debate. The traffic assessment that looked like it was one of the first things that would probably be done, page 22, would that be a town-led thing for, to benefit the whole site, or would it be something that would have to be looked at for the users?
Through the mayor to answer Ms. Counselor Flowers' question, typically, through development permit process, those types of third-party reviews are borne by the applicant. So again, that kind of goes back to what Mr. Nelson was saying about what type of active role does the town play in supporting developments on these sites, and those are decisions that we didn't feel comfortable making recommendations on without hearing further conversations.
Yeah, it gets tricky because they can't go looking for funding until the plan's in place, but then they can't really do the plan until they know what the traffic's, what's going to be expected, so it's tricky. Oh, there was a 40% contingency fund. Is that a normal amount to put in in a project like this?
For this project stage, yes, that's in line with council's actual cost assessment policy, so at this level, without having more detail on actual site grades and true pipeline and manuals, valves and all that stuff, it's, it's in line with how we should be estimating stuff so that we make sure that we're, you know, not caught off guard at the end.
It's almost 3 million for 40%, it's a lot. And then 15% for professional fees, is that for management of the whole project or?
That is generally the cost for consultants to do the detailed design, engineers to staff the work, their construction staff, or construction staff to monitor the earthworks, get the geotech testing and that kind of stuff, so that's pretty in line with other projects we've done as well.
Design for all the underground stuff but nothing uptop, just for underground?
No, for the park, for the Central Park improvements and that stuff, there's, that's engaging a landscape architect as well.
Okay, and there wasn't any mention of underground parking. Do you think it's feasible for the seniors housing to have underground parking?
I believe through the Tri-Sites concept plan, it was assumed that the seniors housing would have underground parking, but a geotechnical investigation would be warranted at a later or more detailed stage to understand whether underground parking is there. That said, there's underground parking at the Glenbow condos just to the north of this site, so reason to believe that it is, he's quite feasible at this location.
That would have to be decided pretty early on to plan the project. Well, somebody in the community was asking me about the ponds related to the railway and historical downtown. So if the railway tracks are twinned like we're thinking about doing in the future, is that going to affect the project? Do we have to plan ahead for that?
I would say that through the downtown stormwater drainage study and the work that's happened with 1A's widening, we're pretty aware of the amount of flow that is going to the highway ditch and through, not so much passive, but asset renewal and those types of projects, and having more source control, stormwater through redevelopment in the downtown, we should be able to mitigate the amount or decrease the amount that flows into the CP ditch over time.
Okay, that's all I have for now, thank you.
Maybe just on that contingency piece, if I could, just for clarification, the 40% you're referencing is a council policy, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, so it's a council policy that we ask administration to have a 40% contingency at this stage in a design, and then as the designs move through and the details are worked out, then that percentage drops.
Continues to go down, yeah.
Yeah. Okay. I just wanted to make sure I was understanding that correctly. Counselor Fedeko.
Thanks for the presentation. Couple of questions. Between Phase 1, Phase 1A and Phase 2, we're talking about $19 million, correct, roughly, just for servicing kind of things?
Correct.
How much would be offset by offset, offsite levies for that, or is that just taxpayer amount that we would have to be looking at trying to fund somehow through the town?
To the chair, to Counselor Fedeko, that really does come down to, I mean, Counselor Flowers mentioned that through the Tri-Sites concept plan that we are going to retain ownership so there wouldn't be any sale of the land, and so it comes down to how much of an active role the town wants to play in servicing these lands. The water and sanitary are not offsite levy eligible, that they just would, they'd have to be oversized to service a larger area, and this servicing is really only meant for here. If we were selling these lands, you could potentially look at including it in the offsite levies because they'd be benefiting from the destruction, but without that happening, that's not really the case. And then the stormwater, we have looked at that just for kind of improving our existing level of service in those areas to also support, you know, kind of more redevelopment in the historic downtown as well as in line with council's priorities. So there's not a lot of opportunity to offset any of the infrastructure costs.
Gotcha, and then I think the other question I would have is kind of a timeline, right? Because obviously, some of this stuff can happen, I mean, we can't be moving ball diamonds without making sure that Horse Creek Park is up, right? I mean, I have questions as to what kind of timing are we looking at? Because obviously, the senior center is chomping at the bit to get going, but we can't start that without making sure that we have a fundamental plan to be able to move stuff, right? So was there talk about a timeline as to kind of mirroring those projects as to how they could occur or not, not quite yet?
I'm just going to double-check with Mr. Hyman. I believe it's 2023 that is in the capital budget for starting work up in the Horse Creek Forest part, so a better part of that year to get the ground graded and the ball diamonds moved in before ball diamonds could be removed from here to fall in line with the Tri-Site concept plan.
Gosh, and with that part, then obviously, the money has to follow suit for Phase 1, right?
Correct.
Yeah, it's a, it's a big bill, and it's, I'm not saying that it's not worth it, but you take that on top of what we've recently tackled with traffic and everything else. I've got some concerns as to how we're going to fund it, right, and what it's going to cost our residents. I mean, we all agree, we would love to have this kind of stuff, but again, it kind of goes back to that whole discussion when we were discussing the Tri-Site a long time ago that I said, as soon as we start discussing it, people want to have it done, they want to have it built, they want to see it tomorrow. And in reality, I honestly don't think our residents could support this for, God, I want to say 10 to 15 that I said, as soon as we start discussing it, people want to have it done, they want to have it built, they want to see it tomorrow. And in reality, I honestly don't think our residents could support this for, God, I want to say 10 to 15, maybe 20 years from now. Like, that's just reality of where we're at, and I would hate to, I would hate to get started on one thinking that, you know, all of a sudden, you know, we're talking about phase three partners coming on board, and they're like, hey, let's start fundraising. I mean, I think we're honestly years out for us to be able to afford this as community. And the sad part is, is that those costs are only going to go up. The longer we stall, I mean, we saw that with our Protective Services Building, you know, it starts off at 17 million or 18 million, and pretty soon we're sitting at 35 million, right? Like, so, yeah, I've got, got some big concerns on this one. But thank you for the information.
You're welcome.
Yeah, and just to be clear, we're just accepting this today as another step in the, another piece of the puzzle, as we say, in transportation side of things. Counselor McFadden.
Yeah, thanks for the, the great overview, it's quite thorough, I think it's, Counselor Fedeko is, is kind of flagged that it's bringing some, you know, reality to the dream. That being said, a lot of this isn't, these are important to the community. Seniors housing is a, is a must, it's not a nice to have. So my question though, I did get a little bit confused in the phasing, could we move ahead with phase one without requiring the closure of the ball diamonds?
Through the chair to Counselor McFadden, there's, there's certain economies of scale of doing the earthworks to prepare the land for the seniors housing that could be looked at in greater detail. However, I would, I would suggest that move, putting the seniors housing in there would impact the ball diamonds.
So, yeah, that's just an opportunity cost to consider, and then also, Counselor Flowers had kind of highlighted that the, the assumption of the tri-site group was that the municipality would retain, you know, ownership, but as we kind of get into what trade-offs might be necessary to make this necessary, then, you know, we need to move ahead with some good conversations around the whole governance ownership piece of this and what would be possible, so. Anyway, but I'm glad, you know, that we're here today with this information, and that way we can take the next step with our eyes wide open on a lot of projects that the community is really asking for. So thank you for the great presentation, I think it gives us, as a community, as a council, lots to chew on.
Thanks. Yeah, we, as a project team, we really did want to make sure that, you know, we kind of laid out what we saw as all the moving parts here and, and how this plays out so that it's very informed decisions.
Yeah, good questions. Counselor McFadden, Counselor Flowers, back to you.
I'm just curious if we spent all the money that we had allocated to looking at this, or is there some more to do the next step?
What would the next step be like?
I don't know, but we could figure out what the next step is, and so I just wondered if the $100,000 is used up if we're starting from scratch after this?
It's not all used up, but I, there's not enough, not a lot left there to, to start something new, is it?
Just thinking about the next steps, and I know it's big and scary and the numbers are big, but nothing would ever get built if we got scared off by the numbers right off the bat. And we have to have some kind of plan to apply for any of the post-COVID funding that's coming, so I would sure hate to miss that. And nobody's saying that we're delving into the taxpayers' dollars, we're just looking at the project to see what we can do. Personally, I would, wouldn't mind giving up one ball diamond if we had to, but I know that could be controversial, but depending on how the timelines come together, those are my final thoughts, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor Flowers. Counselor Reed, over to you.
Yeah, I, I really appreciate the report and the information, I mean, this is a classic case of dreams versus reality, and, and it's very sobering in terms of those who have a, a passion for this project, as I think all of this council does, but it is the reality of what it is. My question was, having accepted that and, and appreciated what others have said, I was curious as to how the corridor study overlaps with this Fifth Avenue site development.
I might pass that one back to Mr. Nelson with his involvement with the corridor study as well. Through the mayor to Counselor Reed, largely from an interface perspective is how they would, they'd sync up. The corridor plan talks about how that interface looks, how the buildings are to front onto Fifth Avenue, what that character in the corridor is going to feel like. The actual capacity along the corridor wasn't impacted or suggested to be impacted through the corridor study. The, the one piece here that would be kind of a next step is that functional work. So how does it look from an access management perspective along Fifth Avenue into the future? Exactly where are those access points that make good sense for the buildings on the upper bench? You know, there's obviously other potential for conflict along the corridor, so making sure you have that as well as where those crosswalks makes the most sense for the, for the, for the Fifth Avenue site. So there's a number of different elements, I guess, that would, would sync together, but getting into the detail would really be the next step, and I think that would, to one of the questions earlier, just help inform as site partners are ready what that expectation would be, where their access could come from, those kind of things, from a very detailed perspective.
Yeah, Chris, I was wondering in particular if we're moving Fourth to Fifth, that would suggest there's going to be additional vehicle traffic capacity on that road, and then having those access points, is there, is that a conflict or can that be managed? Because I mean, let's recognize that there's only really three corridors, north, south, other than the Highway 22 running through the community, and that, that is right now a fairly heavy trafficked area. And again, if you move Fourth over to Fifth, would suggest that the reason in doing so is that, aside from reducing one stoplight, is that you want to be able to use that corridor for vehicles?
Yeah, yeah, and that would be consistent, I think, with the corridor, corridor plan, you know, that the vehicular movement is very important. The, the number of accesses and how they, they operate along Fifth Avenue does cause challenges, and that's something that would need to be looked at through that functional work. That's a big, big piece of trying to create more capacity without widening the corridor.
Right, perfect, thank you.
All right, thank you, Counselor Reed. Counselor Wilson.
Thank you. As I was looking through the report and I'm listening here, it's, I don't know how many of my questions or thoughts here are going to be useful to the conversation of just the infrastructure and the servicing that we're talking about, which is a really good report, and I appreciate the, in particular, the decision-making framework with the stormwater plans, it's interesting the way that we, we came to, to see the, the costs and benefits of each option before us, so I appreciate the presentation today. The thoughts that I had, but as we look through the plans there, I guess are, are more in line with governance and ownership, which was highlighted at the end of the presentation, that that's still a council decision essentially how the whole site will be built out. And, and so I guess some of my questions about how will the buildings actually come to bear, is the land owned by the municipality? Some of the funding questions that I'd have are all perhaps for a later date, I don't know, yeah. I guess the other main takeaway as I look at it is I see us moving a parking lot from up top that's already there down to the bottom, and would have questions about where the, why we decided to do that, again, that's, could be a future planning decision sort of question, so if these aren't useful to today's conversation, may I all save them for a different time? Just looking for input, may administration or the chair, when's a good time to discuss those sorts of things?
I think to your point, Counselor Wilson, there's a lot of next steps that, and Counselor Flowers has alluded to that too. Some of this is just coming out of the tri-site concept plan, and the parking lot was contemplated through that. But we still have a great deal of work to do administratively, council, table-wise about what's next, who pays, how we pay for it, what goes where and what order, so those are all, those are all next steps. I think what we're outlining today is that to do any of those things, this is the servicing cost of that.
Right. Okay, thank you, it's a good report, it's useful, and hopefully it builds on to the next step that I'm excited to get to, which is how do we make this actually happen in a reality? So I'll save the thoughts for that time, thanks.
Perfect, I think we're going to park that thought, right? I actually have it written down here. Counselor McFadden.
Yeah, so just following up on the, on the parking, and maybe I was just remembering it wrong from the initial tri-site conversation, the idea though is that the mixed-market housing and the event center would both have underground parking, is that correct? So that the site at the end of the day is going to be much busier, but would also have more parking?
Much more.
Much more parking, sorry. And then part of the point of the corridor plan is to make it easy to walk there, so you're going to see, it's going to be a attractive site, but it's supposed to also be easy to get there for cars and people on foot and bikes, so. And it's exciting, it's a dream, but we, you know, need to take steps to McCaffin, but a little bit of a reality check today.
Okay, thank you, Counselor McFadden, yeah, and just to build on that, that's really what, what I wanted to talk about tonight was, this afternoon, I guess it still is. I appreciate the report, I, I think we're all kind of sitting here a little bit sticker shocked, maybe by the amount, and we all dive into things, as everybody's alluded to, with these great aspirations and dreams and, and, you know, but that's where things start. So now we're starting to dive into what the, the cost of that reality is, and I'm glad we're here, and I'm glad we're having this conversation, and it's early in the game, and we haven't really got a concrete structure to say, hey, okay, oh, and $20 million, all right? And crush everybody's dreams. We can actually now, and I think to your point, Counselor Wilson and Counselor Flowers, that we need to get into next steps, and that is governance, and from my point of view, it's, it could be Big Hill Lodge if we're talking about seniors housing, do we now think about subdividing and then associate some of the costs with that? Actually, in my mind, it doesn't really matter, we have a cost to do servicing, and now we have to divide it up amongst the, and I like the language you use, site partners, and the town being one of those partners. So what is it that when, say the, and I'll just use Big Hill Lodge again, because we know they're a player, a partner, what is it that they need? Phase one, it's $5 million roughly, right? So then they're fundraising, we attach that price, that servicing to that particular building, and it's, there you go. So that's not particularly taxpayer dollars, that's Rocky View Foundation coming up with the strategy, maybe with the province. So now we're getting down to 15, and really what I'm trying to get at here is that while we're shocked by the amount, how do you eat this elephant? And it's, it's one piece at a time, and it's one piece of the puzzle at a time. So as we move around the site, how do we phase it? I mean, yet to be determined, what can we do tomorrow? Yet to be determined, but I think what we're hearing tonight is that, or this afternoon, is that each one of these pieces of the puzzle are going to have a utility cost associated with them, that for some of them are going to be more fundraising initiatives. To your point, Counselor Fedeko, might take longer to raise those funds, but also what I'm hearing from Counselor Flowers is that if we have a plan and we can get out there and maybe apply for some of the grants federally that are coming through due to COVID or other things, this doesn't have to be a burden on the taxpayer, it can be a, you know, however we figure that out in the future. But I, I just don't want to have this feel like it's this big mountain we have to overcome, and this thing's never going to happen, to your point. I think it's, okay, it's another thing we have to contemplate and figure out, but I'm glad we're here today talking about it, and now we just have to figure out next steps. And really, I would say, what are they? Like, what is the next step? Are we doing something? Do we need to put something in a future budget? What would, what's the recommendation on the next step forward? So if we hear from Big Hill Lodge, what do you guys need us to do? I think we need to start to have answers to those partners. Is there a recommended action of?
My recommended action would be to understand the governance and ownership part of the site and put, to put together a budget line item for next year to do servicing install is probably one of the simpler tasks of, of building this site out.
Perfect. Okay, so there we have it, we have something that somebody can put into the budget or talk about at the next step, but I think we have a lot of dominos that need to fall as we've talked about the Horse Creek Sports Park and getting out of the way of some of the other things, so. Nothing's ever easy or not connected, right? Okay, any other questions, comments? No, I really do appreciate the report and the complexity of this project, you know, reading through it was really technical, you know, and outfalls and catchment areas and, you know, yeah, there's a lot in there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, lost my agenda, here we are, 5C I believe we're on now? Just going in alphabetical order. Park use review. A new face at the podium.
Does that mean you get to be very gentle?
Not a new face, a new face at the, at the council podium, so good afternoon, welcome, Ms. Almond.
Thank you, good afternoon, council. I'm going to be lightning quick, I have not done a presentation because I think it's simple information, so I don't think I need some wizzy presentation to do to you. This is in response to a delegation that came to council January 25th, 2021? And that was with By Cochrane coming to council to speak about Jim Affelman Park. So the area in question is the Jim Affelman Park, which is located adjacent to the Bow River, of course, which extends from the River Avenue parking lot to northeast of Spray Lake Sports Family Center. This is a multi-use pathway that's paved, that is very popular with all fleet dog users as well as cyclist runners, and quite a thoroughfare now to Spray Lake Sports Center. There are very strong varying opinions from community on the best use of this area. And additionally, I would say probably more importantly, there's some significant erosion that's starting to happen in that area that we need to pay attention to. An in-depth analysis is required to determine the best use of this pristine area to serve all the residents of Cochrane, and very importantly, to ensure good land stewardship of the area. So administration is going to be including a capital project for your consideration in the 2022 budget to engage with the services of a consultant to provide us with an unbiased review of the area for best use of the area, as well as doing an in-depth environmental impact study so that we can truly find out what we're doing to that area and what the best use of that area is for our future generations, pretty much. So really, that is all I have to say tonight, is just to say that we will be bringing it forward for conservation for the 2022 budget, and it's to close the loop on the By Cochrane delegation that came forward in January. So I see lights flashing already, so I am happy to take any questions that you may have for me.
Well, thank you for the presentation, and just to be clear, it's, you don't have a, an answer to the question, that is going to be a part of the budget?
Correct, correct.
Counselor Fedeko.
Thanks for the information, I think it's a smart idea to take it out of the hands of the municipality at this point, because we do know it's a very divisive topic, and I think that hiring somebody non-biased that's going to run out and do the, especially the public engagement piece, is going to be so, so important. So, you know, whether or not, we obviously don't know about the financial cost, it's going to be, come along with the price tag, but I think, you know, as we move along, we definitely need to go this route, and that way we take out the passionate people on either side of this conversation, and we do our own research to, to move forward for the best plan for the resident, so thank you for that.
Absolutely, thank you, Counselor Fedeko.
Thank you, Counselor Fedeko, Counselor Flowers?
I too, just wanted to say thanks for the presentation, and I'm glad to hear it's moving forward. We need some new ideas and, and outside look at it. It's a really busy area, and once Greystone comes, it's going to be crazy down there, so hopefully we can do something to use it or protect it at the same time. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Flowers.
Counselor McFadden.
Thank you, I am quite, I really appreciate this approach, that we're looking at the, at it more holistically, the future use of the land, and, you know, as somebody uses that site a lot, you can see it's overused in a lot of ways, and the banks and the stability issues, and it's just getting, going to be a more and more popular, desirable place to use, so I think it's, it's fair and appropriate and responsible that we look ahead in a very deliberate way to how we use the site. My question then is, is more along, so it's a $75,000 ask for, to do this consulting work to review the whole site. So I'm just a little confused, because that sounds like an operational budget to me. Is there an operational budget and a capital budget? Is there two different budgets we're going to see, or is it just one?
Just the one.
So it's going to be a $75,000 budget? I'm just confused by the, the capital word, that's all.
Oh, by the capital word.
Just because capital to me usually implies that we're going to do and build something, where operational is.
I'm going to turn to my left very discreetly and ask for some help on, from our fantastic panelists.
Welcome to your first meeting.
Yeah, my recommendation would be to have it as a capital budget item, the reason being is usually operating is ongoing expenditure, something that's a continuing thing, and at this point, it's a one-off, and so therefore usually when we have a one-off type project, we do include it in a capital budget.
Thank you for educating me in that, I appreciate it. And this work is also going to include, I think it was raised, but how it integrates with the Greystone site, but also just like using the site, you know, with the Greystone site, but also just like using the site, you know, moving from Riverview to the farmer's market this weekend. There's not a good way to integrate with that at all. So this work is going to be like, kind of the site that I currently consider to be the off-leash Jim Affelman Park, but there's a lot of kind of gray unused area that's part of the rec center space and the municipal infrastructure. Is it, is it gonna be all of that space included, not just?
Yes, Council McFadden, it is gonna be the full 10 hectares that we are looking at. There's a lot of space that, you're right, everyone directs attention to the off-leash area, but it's much bigger than that. And the erosion is further east as well, that we need to look at and find out, which includes the area that you're speaking about, that's gonna be impacted by the Greystone development here.
Okay. Well, yeah, no, it's great, probably maybe the only thing that would have made it easier in my head would have been just a map to understand the extent of the site. I work both maps.
Yeah.
Excellent, so thank you very much for this. I think again, as I said at the beginning, I think it's timely, very deliberate about how we use this important piece of our community, so this is a good approach, so thank you.
Thank you.
Council Wilson?
Presentation, Lisa. If this is to be approved in the next budget, what do we think the, what would this produce at the end? What would the consultant come back with? Would it be, is it a design study? So would they have recommended design action following the study, or multiple choices, or just kind of wondering what we're expecting from it?
Yeah. Thanks, Council Wilson. I would be looking for an environmental impact study as well as a multi-use suggestion. So looking at what would you suggest are the best uses for this area, having consulted with all the stakeholders. So the current stakeholders and the future growth, and giving us recommendations, and then we would bring those recommendations back to you to, to make a decision on how to utilize that park going forward, because we have been asked by the community to look at it, yeah.
Right, okay. Would that be as far as to have costs involved with the different recommendations as well?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I think that wraps up the questions. I do, as my colleagues have alluded to, I appreciate the approach that's being taken here, but I also like that we're including without, you know, this wasn't part of the ask by Bike Cochrane, but the, the environmental side of things. So I think it's smart to include that for obvious reasons, and you've outlined in the report, but thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, five D. Heritage Hills Neighborhood Plan, oh, sorry, Stage Two Neighborhood Plan Amendment. Mr. Heineman. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Council, and, or Mr. Mayor and Council. Just get this presentation up here in a moment. So as you recall, last week, I just introduced this item very quickly at the end of the meeting, and the non-statutory public hearing was set. There's two simple amendments to the neighborhood plan that are being proposed, but we thought we'd take the opportunity to share those this evening, so in September. You have had this information, you've got the benefit of seeing the presentation before, and then in a position to proceed at that time. So the intent of the presentation is just to share that information with you, and then certainly answer any questions that you might have. This is just a map showing the Heritage Hills community, and the subject of the amendment is outlined within this black box. So Amendment One is really to take an area that is identified as multi-unit dwellings and townhomes and change it to single and semi-detached laneless homes. And there's, there's a little bit more detail in the, in the next slides on this, but in this area, for these homes, there is a rear lane on the blocks, on this block, and these homes will not have access to that rear lane. And you'll see more information as we go through the entire presentation. But it's proposed that most of the lots will be semi-detached, and there'll be one single detached home at the end of the block, due to the odd number of lots on this block. It doesn't require a land use amendment. The area outlined in red already has the R2 land use designation, so it allows for both the originally proposed townhomes, as well as the single and semi-detached products. So as I indicated, no, no amendment is required in terms of land use. We just need to amend the area structure plan, or excuse me, the neighborhood plan. With this change, it does reduce the overall density, it reduces it by 11 units in the neighborhood plan area, so that's something that we wanted to bring to your attention, but the overall density remains at the existing 7.9 units per acre. The density text and table will be updated accordingly within the document for your consideration. Amendment Two is the removal of walkways and related text in the garden lot section of the neighborhood plan. So this is a little bit of a different product type that was introduced. So here is the, the original concept, so I'll just go, so the garden lots were a new form of housing within Cochrane when the neighborhood plan was proposed, or first proposed. And as we were working, and really, they were intended to face onto the Central Park, and you can see the walkways that are identified. So once we, after the approval, and the developers working through the finer points and the logistics of this, we, they were running into some issues in terms of these walkways. So really what they would like to do is, and this really will provide both amendments, so you can see, here is the lots that would go to the semi-detached, then you, then you see the one single detached. They will not have access to the rear lane that I mentioned. I think I probably should have started here, and would have probably made it a little bit better. But front-drive product, and then a rear fence. There's visitor parallel parking along the rear lane. This is a 10-meter lane, so a large lane. And then what's the change here is that these lots, for these garden lots, still face onto the Central Park feature, but what they've done is they'll have house numbering on the rear, so they can receive deliveries and things of that nature, but there will be the walkway, and then the individual walkways to the individual properties. So overall, we feel that this is a better outcome. Certainly, the developer feels that way as well, and so certainly this is the purpose of these two amendments that would be forthcoming for your consideration on September 13th. So the recommended action is that the committee of the whole accept this presentation as information, and as you may recall, we set the non-statutory public hearing for September 13th at 6:00. And that is my presentation. Happy to answer any questions. Perhaps go back to the slide if you had any, needed any further detail.
Thank you, Mr. Heineman, for the presentation. And just to, before we get into questions, this is kind of a new approach to delivering this type of information to council prior to public hearings. And that was the beginning of your presentation, but just so everyone's clear, this is saving us some time at the public hearing, so that we have more time for questions from the public, which is why that exists in the first place.
Correct. So the intent on the 13th, when I'm back before you, is I would do a very brief presentation and then turn it over to the public for their opportunity to provide input, and then certainly here to answer your questions now, as well as at that time.
Okay. Thank you for that. Council Fedeko?
Thanks for the information, a couple of questions. Is there a product in Calgary that has garden hosing, like in a certain community, or something that we could take a look at, just as to the flow of what that might look like?
I believe there are similar products in the city of Calgary, and we could have something for September 13th, so we could, and certainly I'll reach out to the developer and make sure that we have something. Again, their main premise was for people for their front door to front onto this park and have that, and then also to have a rear lane. So it was somewhat unique at the time of the neighborhood plan. We were excited about having a different product style, so we just ran into some logistics through the walkways that we felt are now addressed through this proposed amendment.
I mean, I like the idea of having a different housing option, but yeah, I would definitely be curious to see just what that, what that looks like physically in front of me, and just how maybe that flow goes. My only question is gonna always come back to parking. Where do the overflow, like, yes, you have visitor parking in the back, but where do the overflow people go? I mean, we already know that there are certain areas on Heritage Hills that have been flagged numerous times to being overcrowded, there's no place to park, so all of a sudden now, you have all these homes, there's, you know, I don't know how many vehicles could actually fit within that back rear lane, right, if they're visiting? But then if there's more than that, where do these people go? And we already know that people don't use their garages, they don't park where they're supposed to. My concern would be that, you know, you're not gonna have visitors parking back there, you actually have residents parking back there and dumping off their stuff, and I just would wonder about the enforcement issue, and then where do these people go if you start to run out of room?
Okay, certainly you'd be able to have that information for the 13th.
Okay, thank you, Council Fedeko. Council Reed?
Yeah, I'm just gonna begin by saying that there are two references in the report about garden products in Calgary. I can't remember where they are, but I know that they exist, and there were at least two references in the report. I too have trouble about, concerns about that parking and the laneway. And I, to the point, I mean, I'd like to see some examples of that. Then the report, it doesn't refer to garden products as having rear or lane parking, it just refers to it as a garden product. So I'd be curious to see just if it has that. And the other thing I was kind of, and to the point about parking, right, if you take a look at, I mean, there's a classic example in that heritage landing of where, of a bad parking situation. I think that's what Marty's referring to. I mean, it's, it's probably a textbook example of what not to do. But Drew, I was wondering, can we ask questions about the overall report?
Certainly.
So for me, the, on page 46, and it's referenced on page 18, 22, and 34, in addition to 46, is about the transportation impact, and it would, so it refers to a 2013 report, and then uses the term horizons, which I'm not familiar with, but I gather is a planning term. Talks about the account of how they're gonna handle the traffic impact, but I'm, if it was done in 2013, there's probably no reference to the Horse Creek Sports Park or Recreation Park, and, and I suspect the Range Road 43 closure to 22 is not referenced there. So like, I'm kind of concerned about, you know, if the guiding principles in this document refer to more vehicle traffic quickly and navigate congestion, is that really gonna be the case? And has there been much thought to that? And then on page 46 as well, it says, "The interim horizon, Highway 1A requires to be widened to four lanes between Heritage Gate and Center Street or Center Avenue." So is that, is that, is that an assumption that for this whole development to be able to be built out, that that has to be done, and who does that fall to? And again, I'm not looking for answers tonight, these are questions I have, and then I have...
No, I appreciate you bringing those to my attention, and we'll be prepared to look into those and have answers for you for the 13th.
Can I give you two more?
Certainly.
One is the water servicing on page 52. The, under Section 1.6, it, the paragraph is awkward to understand, and maybe it's, again, from a, written from a planning perspective, but it kind of suggests that there may be issues as it relates to water for that particular area, in particular, the, the infrastructure associated with the development. And my question is, is that gonna be fully covered by the developer? Or will we be phased, as I think we are in Riverside right now, with having to look at it as a reservoir and infrastructure to support that development?
Okay.
And then the last one that I really like is, and this has been an ongoing challenge for this council and the previous ones, is on page 20, when it talks about slopes. And it says, "The developer team, town administration, external engineering consultants spend a considerable amount of time reviewing the stability of the slopes and for consideration, and it's seen as not being an issue." Is that, is that your reading of that, of that area?
Well, certainly for this area, on the western portion, just south of Horse Creek Sports Park, yes. I would say the eastern portion of Heritage Hills that's undeveloped, that's owned by Brookfield, that's an area where slopes would be more problematic than this area.
Okay, yeah, there's a lot of great things in this, this document. I love the 13 pathways, I love the integrated neighborhood design guidelines, the connectivity, the valley and escarpment preservation, the three-sided road entrances to the school site. I like the shallow depth, or the shallow width lots, that was a brilliant idea. I haven't seen that or heard that before, and I like the garden concepts, other than the, than the laneway. But, but overall, I, yeah, I would like some examples of that visitor laneway parking and how that works. And if that is an example that the city provides, if there's two of those in Calgary, I'd like to know what they were.
Yeah, and it has been some time since this plan was originally done, so those product types that have been built, we can go and get some pictures and have some more information for the 13th.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council Reed. Only other question I have, it was pretty thorough and well done, but the, the product that we're talking about here has a garage on the rear, correct?
It does, correct.
Okay. I was just trying to envision back to the parking thing, but, okay. No, I don't have any other questions, administration on this. Everybody else seems to be content? Okay.
Thank you. We'll see you November 13th.
See you at the public hearing. I do believe that takes us to the end of our committee of the whole, so the only thing left to do is adjourn, so let's do that. Thank you, everyone. Have a good afternoon, or good evening, I guess, whatever's left of the afternoon.